Good afternoon and welcome to the November 7, 2023 work session and special session, 79th voting session of the mayor and council for the city of Heggers Town. This meeting is now called to order. And first up, can I have approval of appointments for Heggers Town Youth Council? Motion to go into special session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right. Approval of appointments. Heggers Town Youth Council term to expire September 26, 2025. We have Alan Anderson, Crystal Dominique, Dominique, yes? I'm sorry, Crystal. Naomi Kendrick and Joanna J.J. Leedy, Tori Millot, Rihanna Matthews, and Olivia Yamesta.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the nominees for appointments to the Heggers Town Youth Council, term to expire September 26, 2025. Do I need to read the names?
She read it, right?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, could you guys join me at the front? For your swearing in? Okay. So... If you guys want to, parents, if you wanted to record, maybe you guys want to get up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't you get up there, that way your parents can record.
The first part of government, where do I stand for offense?
There we go.
That's interesting. Okay, so raise your right hand for me. All right. And you guys are all going to say this together, and you're going to say your name after I say "I," okay? All right. So "I do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States." Let's start all over again. All right. So you're going to say "I" and you're going to say your name, and then you're going to finish the rest of the sentence. Does that make sense? All right. You ready? All right. All right. "I do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States."
Aye.
Do swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Heggers Town.
Of the city of Heggers Town.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Heggers Town Youth Council.
Heggers Town Youth Council.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations. Y'all's got to sweat in your pants! All right, sit down here, and you're going to sign the book beside your name. And Alan, why don't you go first? Good job. We'll get a group picture, so stay right here. Here's a nice little peck. You're my neighbor, I want to see that one. So next up, Naomi.
Never gets old. Never gets old.
That's fun.
You always like to be my neighbor, right?
Never see you.
I mean, because I'm always busy at school.
Yeah, that's a good answer.
Almost like that, you got older, so I don't even know.
Love it.
How about J.J.? You know, you just told me that's what you want to be called, that is your name. Tori. Next up, we have Crystal.
We should get some more.
Crystal, let you just say.
I can be a little more user. You should have more.
They should for sure. They should go with the best, like, either the middle or something.
Did you guys group picture with everybody, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You guys have a group picture.
I saw Eric.
I saw him.
There.
With your council mates. You guys get up here on the steps, and we're going to take a class photo.
Ooh, everybody has their white suit here.
Can we, Eric, can we go the whole way across?
I think we made it two rows.
Two rows, okay.
If you go all the way across, maybe it's not as bright.
There you go.
All right, once you come up here.
You're good, just stay around.
Alan, why don't you come in? So you can't, like, top model off to the side and exclude all of us. Come on, Kristen. You've got to look like a family.
Hey, make sure I can see your faces. Yeah, can you move?
Yeah, they're really.
And then back.
Back, stood in.
That's kind of the bottom row.
Okay, one, two, three.
Heggers Town.
Okay, do one more. One, two, three. Okay, I'm good.
Can I get one more too?
Yes.
All right. One, two, three. I love it when I show it and then.
You got it?
Yes, I got it.
All right.
All right, thank you guys. Congratulations.
See you Monday.
At least you put it in, right?
Put Ryan in. He's getting cooler by the day.
All right. Oh, yes. I mean, if.
Just want to sneak back into rehearsal.
Yeah, she can definitely leave. Yes. Bye-bye. Bye-bye. Yeah, everybody can go. Can I have approval of the addition of part-time police officers?
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council to approve to hire up to four part-time police officers. These part-time officers would be hired immediately and used to augment patrol operations targeting juvenile and disorder crimes in the parks and downtown area. This is clarification from the motion previously approved on October 24, 2023, stating these are contractual part-time police officers.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I have to adjourn to special session.
Okay. Okay. All right, and for our work session, first up, we have public artwork, Hub City Garage, and we have Brittany Ersmann Day, our community engagement officer.
Best office in the house. Hi, Brittany.
So Rodney is the one that usually does this, but since his retirement, he is still the leader of the public art and design work group. But I've taken over the presentation of this. So today, I just want to present the artist selection for the Hub City Parking Garage project. And I think each of you have a packet that Dawn has handed out that has the artists that the group selected. So we'll just roll through these slides pretty quickly. The artist's name is Nigel Sussman. He is out of California. We did have 10 artists submit their artwork. The group then narrowed it down to two to interview. So it was between two artists, and it was unanimous that this was the artist that was selected. So as you can see, so basically, this will be on two different sides of the parking garage that faces the cultural trail. So one side, he has drafted, as you can see, his style is very eclectic, kind of looks like a doodle almost. That's his signature style. So he has done one side focused on baseball, the stadium, and then the other panel is focused on the arts, which is what was asked in the call for artists. The challenging thing is, it's going to be four different panels because of the way the steps, it will be in the stairwell. So the artist did take into consideration that each piece could stand alone by itself and still look like a piece of art. These are just drafts, so we did provide feedback that perhaps he could include some things that are signature to Heggers Town in these drawings. So these are not final at all. He is very receptive and open to that. He may be coming at some point to visit Heggers Town before he sends us his final drawings. If he can't come in person, we're going to do at least one other Zoom call just to follow up on that. And then these are just a few of his other pieces of art that he has elsewhere. So you can see he does all different colors, shapes, sizes, varieties. I think he's fairly well-known. He has something in eBay, headquarters in Berkeley, California. So again, a lot of different styles that he's capable of. So there is an agreement that you will be voting on at the regular session, November 21, for his agreement. And then we can move forward with making his first payment. Then we'll get his more finalized draft, and we'll go from there.
I like the fact that he is going to incorporate more of a Heggers Town feel, because I don't feel that this is very representative of, at least my idea for the garage, when I, we talked about it. If possible, when we did the logo, there was a lot of feedback that was received from community members and stakeholders. If that could be passed along to him in some way that was really kind of a who we are, that might help him with the vision of... I mean, the rest of the art is awesome. I like it, I like it. And I appreciate the art commission, you know, making the decision, so thank you.
And pretty much everyone on that committee had the exact same feedback as what you just said. That was a general consensus amongst the group. We liked his design the best, but in regards to just tailoring it more towards Heggers Town and what we are known for. And he was, again, he was very open to that. And so if you, if you have any specific suggestions or recommendations, please let me know, and we can communicate those with him.
For me, I'm like, less sports, more Heggers Town. Like, I don't want it to be the stadium's garage. That's just my, which is what I expressed in the beginning, so, and just less, more Heggers Town vibe.
Yeah, awesome style, like this example for West Berkeley. You could tell it's very specific to things that are particular to West Berkeley, so, cool style, but yeah, the more we can tailor it to Heggers Town, the better.
We have grit, you know? So whatever that.
Whatever that transpires into an artist's mind.
Yeah.
Okay? That sounds good?
That's good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have fiscal year '25 budget, agency contributions. Michelle Hepburn, Chief Financial Officer, and Brooke Garver, Accounting and Budget Manager.
Good afternoon. I feel like I haven't been here so long, in so long. I think that's why Scott made me stay for three items.
I feel like I've seen way too much of you the last week and a half.
We haven't seen you guys in a while.
It's a quiz we're giving everybody out. Don't panic just yet.
There.
So up first, yes, we're going to talk briefly about general fund, agency contributions. It's hard to believe, September and October, we were extremely busy. Not only were we in the midst of trying to incorporate new audit standard and working with software and doing some implementation there, but then we were also working through the audit, the act for, and the ARPA nonprofit applications. So one of the things that it's hard to believe is, I just finished that, but now we already have to start thinking about fiscal year '25 budget, because believe it or not, Thanksgiving is almost here, and then I really start those conversations, and Brooke starts all the meetings with all the departments. So for general fund agency contributions, just as a reminder, we have an actual policy that's in place. And per the policy, we come every October, it's November, so I apologize, but we come at the end of October, beginning of November, to discuss the policy. And if there's any changes we need to make, so that we can incorporate them into the budget as we are starting to work forwards. So as outlined in the policy, we have eight agencies that we, that always receive general fund agency contributions. And these eight agencies were deliberated at length in prior administrations, and they tried to take from a large group of overall nonprofits and other organizations across the city and boil these down to the ones that, I don't want to say quasi-government, but that if others, like, if, for instance, the library is on this list. If, if the library and education wasn't the responsibility of the county under the state, that the city would still want a library, so we would be supporting that in some manner. So that's what these eight agencies were to reflect, those core groups that if something happened in the city, would be actually still wanting to provide that overall service or community amenity. So the eight agencies are Community Rescue Services, Heggers Town Municipal Band, HNDP, or Heggers Town Neighborhood Development Partnership, the Maryland Symphony Orchestra, the Maryland Theater, Washington County Historical Society, Washington County Museum of Fine Arts, and Washington County Free Library. I would just note, when we originally did the policy, back in 2014, there were only seven. We added the Washington County Historical Society after the very original policy was done. The total, we literally have pretty much had around the same total since 2014. It has been a little bit more in some years, as we did other pledges or funding specifically that we did with the Maryland Theater and also with the Museum of Fine Arts. But so overall, for the eight agencies identified, $195,000, keeping $10,000 in a contingency bucket for mayor and council as other organizations come present. I know we have looked at the past several, I think the third year in a row, part of the Civil War Heritage Area, and, and literally, that $10,000 is where we fund those things, for a grand total of $205,000. So really, the questions this evening are, do you have any changes to the eight agencies? Or are we good with those? And then, any changes in the overall $195,000 for the core agencies, as we originally dubbed them, $10,000 for contingency, $205,000 overall?
I think that I would have an interest in some discussion over the possible changes that may be occurring at the county level with Community Rescue Services, as it applies to transitioning to a county departmental system. And if that, if it does head in that direction, then I think we need to have some conversation, because, you know, at that point, I don't know that it really remains an entity that is providing that service, you know, in lieu of something, simply taxpayers, IA city taxpayers pay county taxes, and the county provides that service. It would just seem odd to me that we'd say, okay, you know, you provide that service, now you're a county entity doing that, and then we just look at it in the same way. It just doesn't seem the same.
Okay, it is the same.
So do, do we leave it here for now?
I'm okay with that.
Are, are the conversations completed? I know, I know there have been discussions on and off for almost, almost three years, and then some of the EMS companies have fallen underneath the overall county umbrella, and then as they start to move forward, should I, should we plan to leave money here for now? And then if that happens, we can put it in the overall mayor and council contingency? Or if that happens between now and next June, we can even allocate it and spread it out across the other seven that we give money to? To like, leave it set aside for now?
I'm okay with leaving it here now.
Yeah.
And, and, but I think come budget time, we're going to have to have a look at it and say, hey, you know, of these groups, you know, you're really the only group that is a billable entity, or a bill, you know, a billing entity, and now you're largely transitioning, if that is the case, you know, into a county entity. I think it, it changes the construct of, you know, how we looked at CRS 20 years ago.
Do we know when that's going to happen with the county? No?
I don't think, I don't think so, unless.
Not if it relates strictly to CRS.
I'd be better, I would be more comfortable in that framework if CRS were to come to the city, much like other entities do from time to time, and say, I have a specific ask, rather than leave them lumped in a generic format, to say, okay, your ask is for, you know, $38,000 for something, you know, that, that's tangible or, or capital in nature. Then, you know, 20 years ago, we went down this route because we said, listen, we understand you're a billable entity, we understand you're a volunteer organization, we understand that, you know, the numbers don't meet the way they're supposed to, we also understand you provide significant response service within the corporate limits. Here is funding toward operational capacity. If that's not going to be the case a year from now, then I think we need to say, hey, you know, no different than any other entity may come, come in and say, hey, you know, I need this one thing. I'd feel more comfortable saying, let's see how we can help with that one thing.
Okay.
You had mentioned that part of the Civil War Heritage Area. Is that sealed?
I, I just left it there. Honestly, I'll probably remove it for next year. I just wanted to leave it there as a placeholder, just to remind us that, you know, they just came in last month. And so fiscal year '24, I've got to think which year, because I'm talking '25 budget, but fiscal year '24 will be the third year. So we did it in fiscal year '22 and in '23. So '24 will be the third year in a row we've moved money out of the contingency specifically to that group.
Because we did give them a heads up that night.
And I think that there was formal motion as I.
There was a formal.
Yes.
Okay.
You were here. You have an excuse.
That was not.
Anything that we put under mayor and council contingency, I, I think it's just better if we break, if we break, make sure that it comes back for an actual formal fit.
Yeah.
I struggle with the, the general principle that we provide the entity funding, but that entity oversees a grant program that provides us funding. It just seems odd to me. Like, I look at the other ones on this list, and, and, you know, we don't give the Historical Society funding, and then they provide us, you know.
Right.
We're, we're then an applicant.
I understand.
Right, we're paying them, you know, or contributing them, and then we're an applicant in their grant review process. It just seems odd. And that's just a, I don't know.
So overall, we're good for now, and leave the $205,000 in the budget. And then by the time that the budget comes and you get it April 1st, April 1st, right? By the time you see it, on March 30.
You said $195,000.
On March 31st.
Plus the $10,000 for $205.
Yes.
That's good?
Yeah.
All right. So, are we going to the next thing?
Yes, we are. So next. Next up, we'll start talking about ARPA, right?
The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. ARPA, I don't know why I could read "Act" just now. Allocations and update. And we still have with us Michelle Hepburn, our Chief Financial Officer, and Brooke Garver, our Accounting Budget Manager.
Okay, so as a reminder, the city received $20.4 million in ARPA funding. As of October 31, 2023, $7.5 million has been spent, which makes up approximately 37% of that funding. That $7.5 million does not include open POs or any projects that are obligated. There's a little chart here of how that money's been spent over the past fiscal years. FY '21 through '23, approximately $2 million per year was spent. And then in FY '24, so far through October 31, $1.33 million.
And I think in the past, when we did, did the quarterly updates, we tried to match the quarter that ended and it was reported to the IRS. But as we slowly start getting closer to December, we just thought, look, in October, we knew we had some spend, and we were able to update everything through the end of October because of timing of when we're doing this. So we wanted to give a little bit more up-to-date information than through September.
December of '24.
December of '24, it's the deadline for now, yes.
There are seven eligible categories in which the funding can be spent. Those are public health, negative economic impacts, negative economic impacts, public sector, premium pay, infrastructure, revenue replacement, and administrative. And then there's a chart at the bottom of the memo, which shows how that $7.5 million has been spent, plus the $12.9 remaining, which Michelle's going to go over here shortly, across the seven categories.
And with the revenue replacement, several months into, into the ARPA program, the IRS had decided, and we could make an election to take a standard, and the standard just simply meant that we could spend up to 50% of our total that we received, so about $10.2 million in revenue replacement overall. And so far, right now, we have 31% there allocated, but some of that is monies that we're going to hopefully move in other categories to. So let's take a look at the charts. So let's take a look at the charts. First up, we have all the completed projects and these are, when I say completed, these are ones that we started, finished in total. And so we've spent about five million across the board. First, we had the ice rink, which we did the air intake dehumidification system for a hundred ninety, a little over a hundred ninety thousand. We worked with Goodwill and did community outreach, which was thirteen thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We did stopgap funding for FSU Hub at USMH that helped them get through until their other federal grant came through and that was twenty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty. Two-factor or dual authentication software, twenty-six thousand, six-seventy-five. There are many across the city, many employees who are not fond of that, but it absolutely is a necessary security feature in today's world. Public facility emergency equipment, so we've purchased some AEDs and stopped the bleed pits and that's been about a hundred and seventeen thousand. So once we're all finished, we have them, they just have to be installed in all the locations across the city, once everybody would be trained and the Hagerstown Fire Department has been willing to step up to do that. So more to come on that soon. Abaco purchase that we received, a hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars, camera rig for wastewater, four hundred and fifteen thousand. Firing range target system upgrade for twenty-three thousand, nine-hundred for the police department. The roof replacement over at the Fairgrounds Park, which was directly over the police athletic league portion of the building for four hundred and twenty-four thousand. Drones for the police department for a hundred and forty thousand. A ladder truck for fire for one-point-two million, which we just received in October. Community outreach vehicle for forty-three thousand, two-hundred, which again was a recent purchase that we just did. Then a, a gas generator at one of the fire stations for a hundred and thirty-three thousand and premium pay of two-point-one million, which again was done, it was the first thing done back in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Next up, we have the projects that are allocated and started and/or in progress. Thirty-two North Potomac, which we are also calling right now City Hall Annex, we spent about one-point-five million of the two-point-two million. Current estimations are that the building and all the renovations will be completed first quarter calendar twenty-twenty-four. The delay has been the water in the elevator shaft in waiting for a structural engineer. Engineers in general are very hard to come by, so even when we outsource and we need projects, it's just taking a little bit. But overall, the rest of renovations is going good. Convention and Visitors Bureau, the CVB, has spent a hundred and twenty-three thousand, so really of their hundred and twenty-five, probably with their very next quarterly update and advertising, they'll have that all spent. Support local artists and bands, we did finish the Heart of Art Grant Program, but Brittany will be having more to come, so we spent fifty-eight hundred of the twenty-five thousand there. Citywide Restaurant Ready Grant Program. So coming soon in the next couple of weeks, I'm assuming that's probably going to be Chris, but representatives from DCED will be coming with a proposal to award five different organizations, a total of two hundred and, just shy of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. So there's going to be approximately fifteen thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars from this specific program that we can reallocate and move back over to our placeholder. Blade eradication, including Operation Take Back, we spent about a hundred and twenty-two thousand so far, nose roar for expansion of our camera system over on King Street. We still have a little bit to finish there, so probably looking at a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty thousand and then I know Scott is full of ideas for the rest of the five hundred thousand dollars spent. So we're working on priorities and, and what is going to be the most pressing that will fit within this category in the timeframe. So we're working on that, but that will definitely all be spent. Next, up to the next column, Outreach Coordinator Position, we spent a hundred and seven thousand to date and again, that's cumulative over several years. Office three sixty-five implementation, we spent about eighty-eight or eighty-nine thousand. That's slowly been rolled out, lots, most, everybody aside from fire and police have been moved and I think fire was just moving, but they're still going to do police and just a few follow-up things for the rest of the city. So that's in progress and moving along well. The trash truck is on order for a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Still hoping against hope we get it in time. City Hall Elevator Replacement, that's on order and Jim Bender and Eric Dyke have been working religiously with Callis and our subcontractor to get that moving. Arctic Wolf Software was a recent, again, I think that's been, which isn't in the last two months that that was approved for a hundred thousand, so that's on order. And again, the Arctic Wolf, it's a cybersecurity software system. We already utilize Arctic Wolf within the police department, but this would be citywide and again, cybersecurity is definitely something that is needed. Next, under infrastructure, we started overall with infrastructure and the concept was that we would stay under a certain percentage and so that percentage was six-point-one million. The first one on this list is Pump Station Thirteen and Nancy has indicated that that will not be done by December twenty-twenty-four because we also look to get some other sources of funding, including ARC grants, which we got a nod that we're receiving, we just have to work through the rest of that. So timing-wise, we're not going to be able to spend it the way that we had originally anticipated, however, she does have plans to be able to utilize for Lonnie or what she calls I and I project over there. So we, right now, are leaving two million. You're going to see that she orig, we originally had allocated here two-point-four and I'm requesting a reallocation of almost three hundred and twenty-five thousand and that will be our very next presentation, we'll go over that in more detail. But again, that would still leave almost two-point-one million and that is sufficient. Pump Station Thirty-three. So to date here, we have approved about two hundred and forty-one thousand on the actual supplies. The bid is out for the construction, they've already had the mandatory pre-bid meeting, I think that was last week, I'm losing track of my dates, but the actual bids themselves for the construction are due on November twenty-seventh, so the Monday after Thanksgiving. And hopefully, we'll have enough with the new three million, but if not, you know, we still have money under the Pump Station Thirteen and I and I project, we could do there. We had a good, good turnout, I want to say, for the preliminary or the mandatory pre-bid meeting and that includes decommissioning of the existing Pump Station Nine, construction of Pump Station Thirty-three, plus the remainder of the supplies that nobody bid on, including the generators and stuff from the prior bid that we did. So that is moving, that should be coming and hopefully if, depending, it's going to be a tight squeeze, but Nancy, as long as the bid dates don't get pushed back from November twenty-seventh, we're hoping that selection can be made and back in December on regular session and if not, we might have to ask for a special session the first week or so in January because we are really cognizant of the deadline there. Next is the Stormwater Project, so the Stormwater Project that we allocated seven hundred thousand for was towards the Hagerstown Field House and Jim Bender and ESM and our partners from ESM have been working diligently with Wayne's Bar Construction, actually, they're like ready to start, but again, they're carving out for us how much of the overall total nineteen million that we did, no, we did, yes, that we did with Wayne's Bar Construction is specifically related to the stormwater portion of it. So seven hundred thousand, they have said now is going to be enough, so we're just waiting for the details on that, but again, to the best of our knowledge, seven hundred is still a good number. Body worn cameras, we spent three hundred and forty-eight thousand, the remaining hundred and seventy-five will be spent July of twenty-twenty-four. Trash totes or trash collecting garbage cans, for lack of a better word. We ordered some and we did a pilot, about forty-six thousand in the downtown area and Jim has since been able to get the contract for our next three to five years. So in the spring, he's hoping in March, he'll come forward to actually request to purchase the rest of them for all their other customers. The bid was already done, we already know which ones we're going to use, it's just getting everything together and working with the contractor and getting that out back. Professional Court Extension, you know, they are working on this, we haven't spent anything yet, just as a reminder, the county is managing that and what they will do is they're paying everything as they go and then they're going to bill us for our portion. So the Professional Court Extension, the city's portion is more than one-point-one-five, it's just that one-point-one-five is, we're going to use ARPA funding, we have some ARC funding and we have a good bit of city local funding in that. Premium, under administrative, we've got Grant Coordinator, we spent about a hundred and ninety-one thousand to date there. Almost there, guys, I promise. So the last page, so in those two pages is the majority of our funding, we're left with just two-point-four, just a little shy of two-point-five million. So in the first column, pub behavioral mental health has been zero. Youth violence prevention is zero, but we left twenty-five thousand dollars in, in the initiatives and then now Danielle Staley and Chief Kifer had met with Brooke and I and they have a plan to come back and present how they propose to spend the twenty-five thousand, that would be the city's portion that we would do through HPD. I think that will be soon. Next, under, we have the whole nonprofits and you're going to see, we got, I have nine-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy dollars there, don't want to give anything away, but we started in July when I left with six hundred thousand here. Again, this, this is going to be a request in our next steps with our next agenda topic item. Brothers United Who Care. So they were, we didn't, we decided in July, this group decided that we, that we were not going to make them apply through the nonprofit application process because they were already so far along. We worked diligently, Stacy Pierre-Louis worked diligently, we got everything we needed, we finally have a sub-recipient agreement, but they, Brother Andy has reached back out and so he has indicated that it is not feasible, he doesn't feel it's feasible for them to pay for their stuff and seek reimbursement, they need the city to do that in another manner. And that would mean, so everything that we've done for ARPA that goes through any other group, everything has been on a reimbursement basis, it's how we wrote the sub-recipient agreement. So if we're going to do anything differently, like if we are going to say, get the invoices, send them to us, we can make the invoices payable to Brothers United Who Care and the vendor so that they would have to sign off. We can do that, it just simply means that we have to bring you back a revised sub-recipient agreement in November, two weeks for the regular session. But I kind of need feedback here because we did this outside the nonprofit process. And I will tell you, I already had staff say, well, then we have to change our nonprofit application and the answer to that is absolutely not. We had an applic, we had a guideline, we had criteria, it was an entire program and we were very explicit and we spouted it all out. So the question is here, what would Mayor and Council like us to do? We approve the sub-recipient agreement if, if they, I mean, if they're not able to honor it in that manner.
So we're changing the rules.
I'm not.
Is that the request that we make some sort of exception for them?
I, I'm simply, I'm simply bringing it back because I don't want it to be, this group gave us direction and, and, and we did and we liked the program and we do and they changed from the, from when they first came and presented till when we finalized the things that they want to cover and so we were good with that and we worked to make sure they got on SAM.gov, again, IRS, federal, a, a, any federal grants, any, in, any, a lot of money you're getting through state agencies is federal, they're all making you do this because it's a federal requirement. So we've worked through that. We had the sub-recipient agreement approved. I just don't want now, if, if for us to go back and say, well, you can't meet the, the way that the sub-recipient agreement is written, then we can't give it. I need everybody here to know that because I feel like you gave us direction when you approved this sub-recipient.
So if I could, because I was counsel whenever he presented, he didn't, the reason why he had to change is because what he presented was to start a program and then he found out that he couldn't pay people to actually be there and help with the kids, that in order for it to be ARPA, it had to be, it couldn't be for your, your staff, so to speak. And he didn't ask for it specifically from ARPA, he was just asking for some help to be able to start youth services and so that's why I believe he changed it to now he's got to purchase materials, where he was actually asking for some assistance to, to help with staff or that kind of thing.
And so we just talked about the agency contributions and I don't, they're apples and oranges. However, in our agency contributions, those groups get their money quarterly after the quarter is ended, meaning they spent their money, the Nancy and me and Bois and I reimb, like.
I don't, I guess I could be accused of oversimplifying this here, but that particular recipient is not receiving that funding through that separate program we've established, correct?
The nonprofit program?
Correct.
Yeah, because he didn't apply through it.
Okay.
Because we said, that wasn't even the thing.
So what I'm saying is like, I feel like what you're asking me is to try and like hold that entity to the weight of something we've created separately and then look to those entities we have directed to go through that separate function with the, I don't know, concern that they'll say, well, that, that isn't what that entity did, but for me, like that entity wasn't part of that. I know that's oversimplifying and I'm sure I could be accused of that, but I guess I just look at it that simple way.
So and, and that's fine, which would mean we would change the sub-recipient agreement for this one. So the CVB, they, they were outside the nonprofit. Their sub-recipient agreement is written the same way. They spend the money, they send us the information, they get reimbursed. So was FSU Hub, so was the Goodwill. So all the other organizations that we've done through ARPA or that we do through agency contributions or that we do with our incentive programs, we've treated similarly, right? That all of our stuff is reimbursement based, it's not, it's not done in, it's not done in advance or, or where we pay the vendor.
So. This one was like granted.
I, I hear what you're saying, but when you talk about apples and oranges and, and I don't know who that I'm going to upset by saying this, but the CVB has a broad range of funding capability, right? To carry that weight, if you will, through a process. An entity of this nature doesn't have that. And I've got to be honest, I'm going to be real honest here, when we go through that nonprofit process, and I know that we've delineated that, but I think it's incumbent upon me to look at that federal funding, look at the capacity of those individual organizations and give some deference. And I know that that makes you squirm a little, but give some deference to that reality, that not every entity is going to be some, and again, I'm not trying to offend the larger entities, you're great at what you do, you've been very successful at it, you've built this huge, you know, record of operational capacity to do so, but you started somewhere with nothing. And I think you have to give at least some deference to the fact that there may be some small entities that are starting in nothing or that work with very little or do a much smaller operation and to say, well, we want to make sure you've got half a million dollars in the bank so that this fifty grand we're going to give you as a reimbursement, you have the capacity to go ahead and do that and then we get it back to you. And I say that, you know, and I use this example, a city, the magnitude of the city of Hagerstown, when you get your POS funding, okay, and you go and you, you build a two, two-hundred-thousand-dollar park, you have a much better capability of absorbing that two-hundred thousand in deference to that length of time for that duration, uh, uh, reimbursement process than a really small town. than a really small town where it's like 30% of their budget to sort of carry that until the six or nine or 12 weeks that you get that back. And I guess it, it would be naive for me not to at least give some credence to, to that reality. I, I don't know.
Which is, which is why we brought it back as, as a discussion.
Yep.
So, if, if, if that's the direction, we'll bring you back a sub recipient agreement, a revised one, to, to them one, in two weeks.
I guess I just like.
I just didn't feel that that was.
We didn't think that was our prerogative.
No, I hear you, but I'm saying like, I would hope that in your evaluation of the entities that have applied, that that not be the absolute crux that we say no to. Because I just.
And I don't think you're going to mind that.
What I'm saying, like, every entity is sized differently. Every entity has historical difference.
This is, this would basically seed money.
And I get that and I kind of accept that and, and, you know, you see the purpose of its application.
Well, we knew that, that they proposed, you know, like, you kind of, that was.
If, you know, if I'm going to be faulted for looking at that without that blindness.
Yeah, I know.
You know, folks out there can fault me. I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yep.
That's just how I heard it that day.
Okay. So, that will come back and that will be on the, we'll add that, Donna, because I think we have the document updated.
Yep.
All right. Then, we had a block for educational and training opportunities. We took that to zero. Uh, in the middle, citywide phone system upgrade, 75,000. We've left that money there. We can't move forward with that until we're finished across the board 100% with Office 365 implementation. Public safety radios and in-station alerting. Here's an under, another 187,500. And I have been working with fire and we're, this money was to pay for the portion of radios that the county wasn't covering under their grant. But then, a lot of that has changed too. So, I'm not sure where we stand and I, we may have to reallocate that money if this isn't moving forward either. Um, fire range security gate, we've left some money there and hopefully, they're actually working on that, they're bringing that back. They put that back out to bid for a second time because what they wanted to do originally isn't feasible in the area where that's at. Community risk reduction boards, we're reallocating that 150,000 and it is now over in a placeholder, um, just because it topped with fire and they don't feel that they're in a position to move forward with that at all. Traffic signal upgrades, um, still in the design phase there. Fuel station dispensing units, we moved the monies there to pay for the outreach vehicle that we approved already. And then for the placeholders, um, we've got 190,000 left. Okay. That's the quarterly ARPA update.
All right, are you ready? Next up, we have American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA nonprofit funding recommendations. And with us, we still have Michelle Hepburn, our chief financial officer, and Brooke Raver, our accounting and budget manager.
Okay, so the nonprofit funding recommendations. Before, um, Brooke gets into a lot of the details, I just want to take a minute. I want to walk us back through this program, what we worked on, um, and, and remind us of the things that we were looking for and the eligible, uh, criteria. So, in July, we did a nonprofit funding request program and funding guidelines. In addition, and what we said at that time was, in addition to an actual application, which we had in our document, other required documentation from organizations included, IRS designation letter, current certificate of good standing with the state of Maryland, project budget and evidence of an active SAM.gov registration. Again, SAM.gov registration isn't a Michelle Hepburn role to upset people. Um, it is a requirement for anybody that we give our federal dollars to. It's a federal website. Applications were received through four o'clock on September the first. Um, and then after September first, we convened an internal staff subcommittee to review the applications throughout September and October. We prepared the, uh, we have a spreadsheet that we've attached, nice little summary of all the applications. And I just honestly, I want to take a few minutes because I cannot state this enough. You know, 55 applications, you think that's nothing, but there were six of us. And we, we as a group felt that all six of us needed to look at every single application so that we were being fair and consistent throughout. And it, it took a, took a little time. So, much thanks to Rachel, Chris, Brittany, Stacy, Brooke. And then myself was the sixth member of that subcommittee. So, there are 55 total applications, does not mean 55 different organizations, 55 applications. And of that total, 42 met the overall eligibility requirements that were in the nonprofit guidelines. So, the guidelines and proposals were meant to respond to the negative economic impact nonprofit organizations experience and to help provide support to the community to better serve the citizens. And we specifically said in the application that the eligible, um, items were children and families, seniors, economic recovery, health and health disparities, transportation, mental health and education. We did not include premium pay, which is again, premium pay or salary recruitment and retention dollars. That is a totally separate eligible category under ARPA. And I did not hear anybody at this table express that that was something they even wanted us to look to give organizations money for. We also did not include mortgage, rent or utility assistance. There were separate buckets of money for all that. I think in the very, very beginning, when we sat and we did all these strategic meetings, we said, um, the consensus was, we didn't want to do mortgage, rent and utility assistance and broadband because there was already so much CARES dollars and other pockets of funding for that. And so, we didn't specifically include that in our eligible categories that we had approved here either. So, if anybody requested premium pay, mortgage, rent or utility assistance, we didn't feel that that was something that was an eligible category that this group defined for us under the nonprofit application. We were provided a total not to exceed 600,000 with a maximum amount of 50,000 per category. And again, we said per category, we did not say per organization. Due to the overwhelming responses received, the subcommittee's recommendations want to include a request to reallocate 324,670. Again, by doing this, um, and we're going to look at the, at the scoring in, in the 18 organizations, but we tried to look at, there was a total of 70 points from the scoring matrix and we looked at what all the scores were and decided 40 and above. That gave us 18 organizations. And again, 324,000 more than the 600 that was originally provided as a not to exceed when I left the table in July. Um, again, we, all the organizations were scored using the same matrix. That matrix was discussed in July, it was included in the application, it was included on our website and it was included every time we sent, um, stuff out. So, we'll take a quick look at that. But basically this evening, what we're looking to and hoping to do is get direction and approval. One, to move forward with notifying all organizations. So, what we would like to do in the month of November is send out a memo to everybody for all the 55 applications, right? To notify them of our recommendations. Two, prepare the sub recipient agreements for the organizations that are actually going to receive funding. And right now, I'm thinking that I would like to do that in November and have that on November regular session. But realistically, I'm going to ask that that be in December because we have to create the sub recipient agreements very specific to every organization in their program. And we also have to have legal review. So, again, permission to move forward to do that. And then last but not least is to reallocate some ARPA dollars, right? So, flip the page, here's the scoring matrix. Again, did not change from what was approved in July. There are seven categories coming down the side, right? One, clearly describes the project intention and resulting community benefits. Community benefits, meaning, um, city of Hagerstown versus outside city of Hagerstown. Two, project responds to COVID-19 public health emergency work's negative economic impacts. Three, identifies and analyzes project and organizational risks. Four, describes success and provides valid performance measures. Five, explains how project incorporates, advances and measures equity. Six, outlines project funding needs. Seven, leverages community and/or county government collaboration and partnership. It can be in funding, it can be in other things. So, when we break it down, one of the things that I think we had the hardest time with was when these applications, you know, they literally would say their program hit like all these different categories. So, it was really hard for us to incorporate a chart. But overall, based on our first scenario or the committee's first recommendation, overall, if we look at doing those 18 organizations that scored 40 or higher, about 10 of the applications and programs would be under the children and facilities, um, category. Three would be under seniors. One, economic recovery. Six, health and health disparity. Four, transportation. Seven, mental health. And eight, education. So, and that, it's up to more than 18, but that's because on any one application, it could be hitting several different things. All right. Then we include, included a, a chart. And again, trying to get as much information so that we could be as transparent as possible, but also without having to bring you 55 applications for everybody to sit here and read through. So, the way that we, we did this is the top, right? There's 18 because that's where we're going to focus on our recommendations. From 19 through 42, again, those were all the applications we scored from 43 to 55. Those were the applications that were ineligible. Whether it was, they requested things that were outside of those categories, maybe premium pay, maybe mortgage and utility assistance. Um, maybe the application was incomplete and it didn't include all their documentations. And out of all 55, truly, there was only one that came in past the deadline. So, um, overall, 55 applications, 4.1 million was the actual request. 4.1 million. So, again, we would love to have said, hey, this is the programs, right? We'd like them all. It, it, it was extremely difficult, except we came back to that scoring matrix. So, you're going to find as we walk through these, um, there are, a lot of them are larger organizations. But, what we did was we said, okay, overall, there's, there's 42 that we looked at. If we took the final score of 40 or higher, that gave us 18 organizations. If we attempted to go a little bit lower, they're so bunched up, it becomes hard to differentiate and cut anything off. If we do, everybody that's 40 or more, that's 18. We, we were hoping to stretch the money as much as possible, but again, those 18 total 924,670. In our slides that Brooke is going to go over, we're going to touch on each of those 18. The other scenario, if council is really opposed and wants us to stick as close as possible to their original 600,000, is scenario two. So, we could get to the top, the highest 12 scoring organizations and that would be 645,000, so we'd still need a little bit. But again, trying to give to as many because these programs, e- everybody put a lot of hard work and initiative into these and, you know, you, you do a program and you want to be able to give money away. The problem is, it's a blessing and a curse, you really want to give it away. But, we had very specific things we were looking at. So, again, our, our first recommendation is 18. And even if that's something that you're opposed to and you want us to stay as close to 600, we do want to take the time just to give you a little bit of information on the 18 that scored the highest and what they were looking to do with their money.
So, I am going to go over the top 18, starting with the highest scored. And we'll go over funding requests, projects and process. So, the first was Potomac Keys Management Services Incorporated, doing business as Potomac Community Services. Their request was $50,000 for a homeless outreach program. Uh, it consists of construction of a bathroom, showering facility, laundry room with commercial grade washer dryer units, HVAC installation, internet access point, storefront, window frosting and signage for the existing homeless outreach program office at 29 West Washington Street.
And this, I mean, this one, it was actually something that through two or three administrations was discussed and that was, you know, public banter. Here's an organization willing to put it and construct it into a space that they occupy, plus more.
Will it be open when they're not?
Huh?
Will it be open when they're not? The bathroom.
Um, we'd have to get back through all of that, but they're managing all of that, so.
Uh, next is Children in Need. They requested $50,000 for client and extended services programs. It will provide essential items such as clothing, shoes, hygiene products and school supplies to children experiencing homelessness, abuse or domestic violence. United Way of Washington County, 100,000 for their Ride United program. This will provide safe and reliable transportation solutions for essential workers who cannot afford basic living costs. And this is for their ALIS population, which is asset limited, income constrained, yet employed.
Which again, we, we, and not that that matters because it's nothing, it's, it wasn't one of the things that we graded, but it would, this one was one of the very few that are serving the ALIS demographic, meaning people are employed, but they can't necessarily, you know, afford education, right? So, this would help them provide transportation to work and also provide transportation, I believe, for days.
Community services, employment and necessities. Washington County Free Library, their request was $12,000 for creating equitable healthcare access, telehealth at the library. It's gap funding to purchase an ADA accessible telehealth pod and health related books and brochures.
And so, they did a very nice job on their project budget. They've already got funding everywhere else. It's going to cost a lot more than 12,000 to provide this. Um, but 12,000 is all the more that they needed. We saw some where, you know, the project budget might have been 150,000. They might have 70 or 80,000 in other funding, but they still wanted the city to give them 150,000. So, again, that was not a consideration, but this, the telehealth for the area of where it's at, ev- every single one we had definitely hits our, within our qualified census tract.
Apples for Children Incorporated requested $50,000 for an infant and early childhood mental health support services program. Um, this will provide a behavior support specialist to increase services provided to children with developmental, social, emotional or behavioral concerns. And they partner with Judy Centers and Head Starts. Girls Incorporated had two applications. Their first is for $50,000 for the Growing Stronger, Smarter, Bolder Program. This is, um, an expansion of its existing program that will, um, provide the addition of Lexia Core 5 Tutoring Program, focusing on healthy living skills, academic achievement and social emotional development. Their second application is for $45,000 for social emotional learning, which is a behavioral health specialist, um, that will provide an intervention model focused on social and emotional support. So, this is adding one staff person.
And again, a lot of, a lot of data, a lot of statistics on just the continued, um, staggering, like the whole socialization after being, you know, removed from school and segregated for so long and how it's really hard for school-aged children.
Is that for a staff person?
Yeah, behavioral health specialist.
So, just a quick question.
That's exactly.
A quick question. So, down here in your ineligible applications, you say premium pay is an ineligible nonprofit category. So what's the difference?
So this is actually a person who's gonna provide this core service, the premium pay. The whole application was to, literally, we wanted it to be anything else. It wasn't to, to feed their current people. It, you and me both. It was all about giving raises to their existing employees, not, not additional employees, not to provide additional staff so that they could have a better staff to, you know, I don't wanna say patient, but staff to ratio. Um it was literally all about giving raises, so to be able to retain employees and be competitive with like America's healthcare. I, I, it was.
Oh, okay. So disappointed.
I wish I.
Just in that, I mean, everything else is very worthwhile, I understand, but, okay.
Boys and Girls Club of Washington County, one hundred thousand was the ask for the after-school youth program. This is an expansion of the existing after-school programs that will include Project Learn, Power Hour, DIY STEM, Smart Girls, Passport to Manhood, Money Matters, and My Future.
My dot future. And then a lot of these, you know, these organizations are already seeking, already starting a process of trying to get continuing, continuation of funding, and really feel strongly that once they can have the money to start it and show the statistics, that's going to help them get the continued funding in the future.
Which makes sense. Next is Brooks House. Their application was for fifty thousand dollars um for the Brooks House Counseling Center, which was funding to support outpatient counseling services for women with substance abuse disorders. Community Rescue Service Incorporated, forty-nine thousand dollars.
So, very specific, very, it was very specific.
Uh for equipment acquisition, it's the purchase of two automatic chest compression devices and a power stair chair.
So very, very specific request. Yes, they, C- so CRS, so you're gonna notice a common theme. I think just about everybody that we do an agency contribution, applied. I think those organizations that receive agency contributions from the county, applied. I think we found many of them that receives the nonprofit and, and/or the gaming commission money through the county, applied. That wasn't necessarily on our scale, but we did make notes on all of them of other things that we funded. It's just that we haven't, CRS doesn't typically ask us to specifically fund equipment in the, where they're using us in their demographics. I mean, it literally, if you look back through that scoring matrix.
Head Start of Washington County, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars for the Martin Luther King Head Start Program. This will provide funding for a summer program at the Martin Luther King Head Start Center, which is eight weeks for eighteen children transitioning to kindergarten, five hours per day.
And again, very much focusing on the demographic and the children and being able to help them continue, like, so if somebody's in preschool and then they're off, and then they start kindergarten for the very first time, it's a hard transition. So having an educational transition also throughout the summer. And/or for those who might not have been able to go to, to a preschool.
Uh Gatekeepers, sixty thousand, for the Gatekeepers Business of Living ARPA-funded projects. Which will enhance free entry programs and services with parented classes, mental health services, juvenile detention center curriculum, and a basketball program.
It sounds like the windows are open.
Hagerstown Revitalization Corporation, which is an affiliate of Hagerstown Housing Authority, requested twenty-five thousand dollars for a HUD Real Estate Assessment Center standard project. Which will provide services to residents living in public housing units to meet HUD internal inspection requirements and achieve self-sufficiency.
So this, so this program, I just wanna be clear. This specifically wasn't necessarily to assist with mortgage or utility assistance, but this was ve- is very, very specific for those ones that cannot or are not able to meet some of the HUD compliance, the cleanliness standards, and some other things, to help fund money for external agencies to come and do that, to see if it helps with eviction for those, not because they're not paying their utilities and not because they're not paying their rent, but that have problems in complying with all the standards. And again, to do this, that then they can show statistics to continue it into the future.
Is that like, for instance, somebody that's disabled that may not be able to like clean behind their stove and all that, and they don't get like that score of eviction because they didn't?
Yeah, so HUD has a very, so yes, they have a very, um, they're very good with their compliance checklist, right? And so you have to be able to hit them all. So even if you're able to do everything else, but you're not able to do that, yes. And then HUD would, now, again, it's not gonna be a mandatory thing that Hagerstown Revitalization Corporation can do. It, it will be voluntary, but they will have lists and they will work with those, anybody who's willing, right? That meets certain criteria.
Then they had a second application requesting fifteen thousand dollars for McClery Hill Transportation Assistance. Uh this will assist residents of McClery Hill with transportation to employment, training, and healthcare services.
And the reason it's so small is again, should just be temporary until they're able to get other transportation. Should already be there.
Hagerstown Children's School Association, fifty thousand dollars for classroom expansion. It's the construction of an additional classroom and bathroom that will serve an additional twelve to eighteen two-year-old children. Community Free Clinic, fifty thousand dollars for community mental healthcare programs, which will enhance core services for the uninsured populations such as chronic disease management and health services for youth and young adults. Discovery Station at Hagerstown, eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh is to provide monthly and quarterly free admission events and low-cost annual memberships for low-income families and those of Title I schools. And last is the Ark of Washington County, fifty thousand for pave the fitness path, just paving the existing onsite fitness path to increase safety and accessibility for the population and demographic supported, which is primarily those with intellectual and developmental disabilities.
How about getting them healthy outside segregated? So again, i- it wasn't about giving you eighteen organizations. It was trying to find a way to fund as many of the requests that we received and looking at, I mean, we, we had very clear guidelines, we had the matrix, and so, again, just by scores. So what are thoughts on the scenario one, which again, would allow us to do eighteen out of the forty-two applicants? Or, you know, is there a wish that we stick as close as possible to the six hundred? You know, again, this three hundred and twenty-four thousand, we could spend it in other ways, absolutely. But will we do, run another nonprofit application program? No. But realistically, we wouldn't have the time. And um I, truthfully, I don't know resource-wise how we would handle forty-two or fifty-five, just administratively. But again, just trying as much as possible to put as much of this back out into the community as we could, which we heard very clearly was. And I know, if you sit here and you look at the names of the organizations, or if you just say the name of the program, it, it's one thing, but then when you actually get the application and see what they're specifically doing and the way they answered the questions, right, so.
Because everyone is deserving, right?
Yes, I was like, look.
Sure.
Would I like to be able to just give, give away four point one million?
Absolutely.
But there are so many restrictions and strings and.
Sure.
So I may have a number of questions. I don't know that I'm really prepared this evening, and I don't know that this is, I don't know, the best venue to go through some of them that are, are, I don't know, are of substance. I think for me, in addition to what you've outlined for criteria, I also asked myself, you know, this is the city's funding for um largely what should be um efforts and initiative that first and foremost benefit uh the city. I don't know how, and I don't mean the city as in like the city, I mean like things that happen, you know, and. Yeah, within the city, and, and so, some of them I can look at and go, oh yeah, that, that's a, you know, that's a regional entity, or that's a national organization, or et cetera, et cetera. I can look at that and go, oh, okay, I understand that um more clearly than uh, than, than somewhere I'm like, well, you know, that's, you know. It's hard, though, for me to do that without that summary of, you know, the, the sort of one-sentence summary that you provided, your purpose or whatever for those ones we did say yes to. For a couple of them, it's hard for me to say, you know, I don't know the purpose of the one that wasn't no. You know what I'm saying? And I think at least for me, at least for me, clearly, there are fifty-five applicants that put in applications that have some interest in, you know, what's going to occur. And I would certainly like to give, and I don't know that it would change my opinion at the end of the day, but I would be hard-pressed not to believe that any one of these fifty-five, at least the, the ones that didn't or aren't being recommended, aren't going to reach out to us after tonight and provide me some explanation of something that I may have a question about between now and the time you say, hey, you know, what's your decision? As far as the amount, I don't have a problem with that. So that's the big answer you want from us tonight, at least from me? I don't have a problem because I continually see we're running out of time.
Well, we also put time next week, if you wanted to go over, you had these type of questions, you wanted to get access to the, to the actual applications to read them as well, then we, we just didn't wanna take a wh- you know, hours.
I don't know what those questions are at the moment, because I can almost guarantee that there're gonna be at least one or five applicants that are gonna reach out and say, hey, I have this question.
So there, there were, I'll be honest, um, there were several that already received funding from the city and already received funding from the county, and their application wasn't an expansion, wasn't a new program, what, it was all the same things that were already given the money for. So that, for us, it was going through all the fifty-five and using, and using the matrix. Because again, just, just putting a purpose in the name of an organization, then, then yes, you're, you're gonna absolutely just wanna give to all fifty-five. I would, I, I'll be honest, I wanted to give to fifty-five. But we, we had a very clear process and a matrix um that we adhered to.
That was one of our questions on our Myers-Will ads.
What?
Have you received other funding? Or have you received prior ARPA funding?
We had that as a question.
Federal funding, you know.
Well, and, and.
So.
You had mentioned a minute ago about being specific to the city, and you're right. You know, I think that that was all of our intention, to be specific to the city. But I don't think that was on the application. Like, how would it, how would it, like?
No, I, I agree.
So I, I don't know if it's, if it's really going to be fair for us now to go by and be like, oh, this does.
No, but some of them are pretty plain for me, like, an example, I can understand why we're providing funding of a request from the Hagerstown Housing Authority versus funding requests from the Washington County Housing Authority. Like, to me, in this position I sit, it's pretty easy to say, okay, I understand our role in this process.
So, if you go to the scoring matrix, I don't, this won't answer everybody's questions, but if you look at the scoring matrix, uh the very first one clearly describes project intentions and resulting community benefits. And again, when we did this, we did this and put the scores, right, zero, three, five, and ten, and it was really hard not to be able to give people partial, but we didn't, um because of the way we had this outlined. But for us, in the way that we all, the committee looked at it, the resulting community benefits, so we literally had questions in the application. What's the demographics that you are serving, you know, one, is it within the quali-? So, did you clear, was the intention clear for the usage of funds? If you, if you didn't even get that far, it was a zero. If the intention was unclear, or the benefits, you know, unknown, so you had a little bit, and were within the qualified census tract, there was a three. A five, intent is clear, presents resulting project benefits, and, so between five and ten, for us, it was, was the organization itself located inside corporate boundaries of the city of Hagerstown? And was their demographics? Cause one of the other questions in the applications with that, right? We asked about qualified census tract and the demographics, was, do you currently, is your demographics currently fifty-one percent or more in the city of Hagerstown?
That's good to understand.
So for us, for number one, because it says resulting community benefits, the only way to get a ten would have been, you had the qualified census tract, your intention was there, right? You had the qualified census tract, your organization itself was within the corporate boundaries of the city of Hagerstown, and you were doing more than fifty, fifty-one percent or more of your demographic was the city of Hagerstown residents.
And I think that, you know, for me, it, you know, I, I trust the matrix and I trust the decisions of the six committee members, thank you very much, um that this is very, we talk about this all the time, database decisions, rather than the emotional part of like, you know, there's so many, all of these are worthwhile organizations to give to. So we have to trust the data with the matrix that we approved, that we trusted staff and so on to do. You know, I think that, and, and, and just like Councilman Alshire, you know, I am okay with the, the money part with, with the, with the question for this evening. But I would appreciate going back and probably dissecting it just a little bit more.
So do you need us to bring something back differently next week, or just?
I don't have specific questions around.
I'm sorry?
I was asking them, do you have specific?
Or just give you time?
If there's any you would want.
I think it's more of a time.
To digest it.
I think that.
I feel like between now and next week, you're, I will reach out to you.
Yep.
More than one occasion.
Yep.
And I would like, I mean.
And it's a short week, Friday, we're not here.
I would like, if we're able to get access to the applications, I think that that would be helpful. For those of us that.
She said it.
This is eighteen, this is just eighteen.
That would be my request.
You'll have them scanned.
I'm okay with the additional funding, but e- even if today, we said these eighteen, as Kristen said, I'm sure we're gonna get questions from the others for us to be able to see how they were scored, or, you know, would be helpful to answer questions as they come in.
So you wanna see how they were scored?
Well, like, I don't know if this is digital somewhere that we'd have access to and that we can look at them.
I wanna see the applications.
So, okay, cause you can kinda see how they're scored here, right? So if we send you electronically. All the applications?
The forty-two.
Yeah, I don't wanna go over.
The forty-two or the fifty-five?
Forty-two, right?
You want all forty-two?
I don't wanna see either.
Then don't look at it.
Yeah, so when you send them out, I'm not gonna look.
Don't put them on the email.
No, put me on the email.
I know, so here's, here's the problem, here's the problem.
You know he'll look at it, let's be real.
There has to be context, though.
Well, but not just, not just that.
Yeah, I feel like my view will be skewed if I look at them.
That, exactly.
Our server is not going to allow, the forty-two, it's gonna be too big.
But I, I think, I think if you look at the applications and you look at the scoring, it has to be in the context of how the committee was looking at them, because you.
Or we could schedule time for you to come in and look at them.
You won't have that ability to do that. You won't have that ability to do that.
That's what I said, for me, I'd rather, if somebody out there has a question,
Yeah.
just send me a question, I'll send it to staff, I'd rather trust your response. I feel like if I dive in to the app, I'm gonna be like, you know, and I don't, I don't wanna be in that position. I just don't.
That's fair.
I don't.
That is fair.
So now I don't.
But any of you are more than welcome to look at any of this, if anyone, it's all public information, can look at any of these applications.
Other than this evening, have any of these applicants been notified whether
No, because that, because depending on what she's, depending on what she said, so we were, that was gonna be the next steps, right? So.
Only, only through the distribution of the packet.
Right, so, but.
Cause it had to be public in the packet on Friday.
But depending, so if next week, the group is ready to go with one of the staff recommendations, or there's a different recommendation, then we would send out memos to address all fifty-five applications. So it's not even, it's not even we're gonna send one to each organization. If an organization sent multiple, we're going to send fifty-five, and it's gonna say, thank you, but unfortunately at this time, right, we weren't able to fund enough to cover all, or congratulations, you will be receiving your sub-ristic agreement.
And if anybody out there's listening, I will be ready to go next week.
Okay.
So if you had a question.
Yes, I think that.
I just, I just think that's fair to you guys, and.
I, I, I can say, I don't think there could have been a better six people to go through this process
And I'm very trusting that.
Oh, yeah, it was, I will say it was very, it was a very diverse.
Yeah.
It, you wouldn't think it with the names that I said, but honestly, we all knew a little bit something different about all the.
Well, and clearly our community is in need, so I can imagine that.
So yes and no, yes and no, I'll, I'll be honest, and some of, yes, and could, if we would, and if I could, would we give the whole four point one? Sure, but what I'm gonna say to you is in some of these, i- in, in the project budgets that we were given, there wasn't necessarily, maybe our funding gave them a surplus. Is that the intention of this? I don't know, maybe, maybe that was the intention. Um, I don't, for what we were doing to show true need, you know, if you have a project that's a hundred and fifty thousand and you need seventy thousand more, your request to us was seventy thousand, so a hundred and fifty. Because I, I think that was mine, but it's just, look, all these programs and all the services that are being provided in the community are definitely appreciated, and if we could give more money.
Could, could you go back through that, um, how many out of the eighteen was each thing again? Cause I think that that was, that was probably the most powerful thing for me to hear, like, eight is in reference to education, seven is into, you know.
So again, it's not gonna add up to eighteen, because several of them were multiple. And actually, what we can do is send, maybe send this, put this right back out, change the date on the memo, and add this chart that Brooke was second to do for us. So children and families category, there was ten, or twenty-six percent. Seniors, three, eight percent. Economic recovery, one, or three percent. Health and health disparities, six, or fifteen percent. Transportation, there was four, or ten percent. Mental health, seven, or eighteen percent. And education, eight, or twenty-one percent. So much like when you looked at, at our, at our ARPA overall, or full twenty point four, and the categories that we have by the IRS, they're very diverse, and the same was true for the areas and the population and the demographics that are gonna be served with this money in just the eighteen.
Thank you.
I'm glad there's fifty-five that apply.
Yeah.
So good marketing. And thank you guys for, for coming through all these fifty-five applications.
It took a good bit of time.
Yeah.
We weren't twiddling our, and then, and again, with doing other stuff too, but yes, we had a very good group.
It's a lot of work.
A lot of good applications. So we'll do that, we'll leave this and change the date, and we'll get this back to, put this back in notice, and we will just, we will add this little chart that just breaks down the eighteen, which is, again, trying to find a way. It's not often I can say, hey, I wanna go over budget and find the money to do. I'm usually saying.
Probably be the last.
Yes, for a start, that's a good one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, City Administrator.
All right, um, reminder, city offices are closed on Friday in recognition of Veterans Day. Uh, there's no change in trash, in trash service as a result, so if you do your thing on Thursday night or Friday night, do your thing that way this week. Um, I wanna thank all of the staff that participated in working the Mummer's Parade and throughout the Halloween weekend, um, into Tuesday. Um, Mummer's Parade went extremely well. Um, of course, there were some knuckleheads that had to be dealt with, but that's gonna happen, but, uh, the police, the fire department did an amazing job, Public Works did an amazing job, and, uh, I, I thought it was a beautiful night, and it was a great, a great event. Um, like to, to, you know, thank Secretary Jake Day from Department of Housing and Community Development for coming up and seeing us last week, the county, and thank the county for inviting us to tag along with them. Uh, they got to see the stadium project and McClary Hill, they were very impressed with that. Uh, we all went up to Fort Ritchie and had a roundtable discussion, uh, and if you haven't been to Fort Ritchie lately, I mean, holy cow, what a, what a nice place that is. Um, and then we had, uh, dinner with, uh, with Secretary and his staff that night, and had a lot of good conversation, I think we can look forward to a lot of good things coming out of, coming out of, uh, Secretary's Department this year, or this, this, uh, this administration. Um, and then, of course, we met with, uh, the delegation yesterday, talked about legislative, uh, stuff, and thanked them for allowing me to talk about MML, um, stuff yesterday, I know MML appreciated that, and hopefully gives them a little head start helping us out with those initiatives. And then lastly, uh, there is going to be a public meeting on the fourteenth, next Tuesday, six to seven thirty, at the Morse Rock Legion, sponsored by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, related to Hamilton Run and its flood risk. Uh, they're gonna talk about risk reduction, and other project ideas that may come out of the community. Appreciate DNR for coming up and doing that within the community, and we've had a couple of questions about that the last couple of weeks, so DNR is gonna be here to listen to you, we will have staff there participate as well, and, uh, hopefully we get some, some good s- suggestions out of that, we have done some work out there remediation, um, in, in the, um, in the, um, Mills Park area, and this will cover more of that, uh, and some, uh, help from DNR that we'll be able to, to utilize, so that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman McIntyre.
Okay, Ms. Baker.
Councilwoman Burnett.
Um, this Thursday is the Operation War, so I'll be tending with Hagerstown Fire Department at Fester to give away free coats to the children there.
Thank you for reminding me.
See you there.
Councilwoman Alshire.
As Scott mentioned, we met with the delegation yesterday, uh, two takeaways from that. One is, I don't know that I realized that it was all of the towns meeting at once. Um, and so I, I, I felt a little bad when I left because I didn't feel like the other towns, I don't know whether they had things to input, but I felt like we sort of monopolized the time, and so.
Didn't realize that.
Um, what's that?
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, we were all at one thirty, apparently.
Oh, really?
I didn't realize that either.
I know, and so after I left, I was like, man, I bet like Smiths Burger, I felt like,
Oh.
you know, I don't know that there was that, that clear understanding, so all I'm saying is, you know, next time we meet either separate, or, or we had that cognizance to say, hey, give some deference to the, to the other town. So if we did monopolize the time, uh, I apologize. Uh, but, that said, we all deal with very similar issues on different proportional scales, so, you know, we probably would have said many of the same things. Uh, the second is, uh, I would just like to thank the delegation, cause I think that's the first time in a few years, and, and I don't mean this to be demeaning, that, that I felt like, you know, they were there and ready and, and willing and, and open to listening to those things within the community, th- that aren't the bad things about the community, but, but more so the things we would like to work with them to fix. And I didn't feel like past iterations where it was politically or, or strategically on opposite sides of a table, but rather, they were really interested in saying, okay, you know, what are the other things within your community that you'd like to bring to us that, that, that need attention? Uh, and so, uh, that wa- that was a, a refreshing, um, uh, meeting.
I agree, I agree, thank you. Councilwoman Schindler.
I'm just gonna sound like a slow echo, um, and really, it's just a lot of thanks. Uh, like to thank the state delegation, I echo what Kristen said, he, they, um, you know, they sat and they listened to, you know, s- some of our concerns for things we'd like to see for legislation, um, and I felt like they legitimately listened, and you know, hopefully some positive effect will come of it, so. Uh, and then thank you for the wonderful weekend last weekend, um, all the staff, you know, the Alsatia Club, um, you know, and everyone involved, from the dog parade to the Mummer's Parade to the downtown block party. I mean, it was, it was an awesome weekend, it was a really cool weekend for Hagerstown, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I just wanna say, congratulations to the advisory council, those that got sworn in this evening. I went to their meeting last Monday, and I'll tell you, they are, they're very competent, and they're working on some projects and some things for the city. Um, also, the adults that they have working with them, thank you guys for your leadership, you can tell that for nineteen kids to sit in a room and be able to get things accomplished, you can tell that the adults have good relationships with them, so it felt really good, and you're awesome for that. And then, I wanna say, um, so social media has been bringing to my attention a couple of different things. One is LA Knight, um, Sean Ricker, which I kind of, I'd known that he was from Hagerstown area, but he fought, uh, well, I guess it's wrestled, not fought, uh, on Fox Five over in another country. They're from home, I actually watched Will Abel's Pride of Hagerstown YouTube special, that was funny. I mean, it was, it was funny, actually even says something about Alshire, but not you, but it was just like, it was I think, I think part of the skit was like, I think part of the skit was a police officer, and the officer was Alshire. So it was kinda, it did make me laugh, it made me laugh, and then, yeah. So Will Ables and Sean Ricker, we're very proud of you, very thankful that you're out there saying, you know, you're from Hagerstown. Um, even though LA Knight got announced as from LA, but I think it was because each time that I listened before, they were saying Hager's Veal. And so, I'm not sure if it might have been easier for him, PR wise, to kind of, he's a ladybug, like, from Hager's Veal. Yeah, so, it was pretty cool, though. Um, and so I also wanna thank Hagerstown Police Department, um, on the night of the Alsatia Mummer's Parade, they gave us a demonstration of their command center, and it was really cool to go in there, and each one of us took one of our children in with us to kinda, you could see where each person was, and you could see on the screen. And so, I tell you, I went home knowing that we were in good hands, um, within the city of Hagerstown, so thank you for that demonstration. And then, also, I also wanna say about the, um, delegation meeting, I did think that it was, um, very productive. Um, also, Secretary Day's visit, Fort Ritchie was amazing. Um, it was very, very cool to learn that so much was happening, and hopefully we're all on board to work together and work this thing out together. Um, thank you, Councilmember Schindler, for letting me borrow my entire Halloween costume. I was an Orioles baseball player, and it wouldn't have been possible without Councilmember Schindler, all the way down to the black paint under my eyes, so thank you. And then with that, we are adjourned. And then, with that, we are adjourned.
So many moving parts and pieces. And when you get 55 applications, our guidelines and things that just can't, you can't bend those things. I mean, they're federally mandated, essentially. And then, they are the ones, meaning the council members, who essentially will approve all of this. So, can you, can you give me some sort of synopsis of how all of this went down from your corner? Just to give anyone who's sort of tuning in at this point on this to understand what it is exactly that we're talking about? And then, we'll get into some of the, some of what the discussion entailed during the meeting itself.
Okay, certainly. So, nonprofit funding, we decided back in July, we got approval for a program and for funding guidelines to put out, if you would, a call to all nonprofits that met certain criteria. To put forth an application and submittals for programs that they had or areas in which they were providing a service and needed some funding or needed to expand a program or create a new one. At the time, we had about $600,000 that we had from our mayor and council the prior quarter that had been allocated here. But again, we received an overwhelming response. We received 55 applications, so we know that and appreciate that people are listening and they're definitely interested in providing key services here in the community, which again, is all a great thing. Of the 55 total applications, it was about $4.1 million asked. We had an internal staff subcommittee and I just want to do another shout out to all of them. Rachel, Chris, Brittany, Stacy, Brooke, thank you so much. It was a lot of hours to review and every person, all six of us reviewed every single application. So, we had a scoring matrix that was approved back in July as well, at the time that the guidelines went out. It was included in the application packet. It gave seven different things and areas of which were going to be graded. And so, it was there for everybody, as well as how it was going to be scored. So, there was a zero, a three, a five, and a 10 to kind of help organizations and writers for this application process to kind of be proactive. And of course, the application process itself, as well as an IRS determination letter or designation letter, current certificate of good standing with the state of Maryland, a project budget, and evidence of a SAM.gov registration were all items that we requested to be submitted. Without all of those key items, the packet would have been deemed incomplete.
Do you feel like, on your part and the subcommittee's part, that you did everything you could possibly do in terms of getting this information out to nonprofits and making it clear what that criteria was? Because I remember doing a video with Stacy in advance of all of this, before the applications went out, to try to help people, you know, kind of a how-to video of how to approach the application, maybe hit on what some of those questions might be along the way. And then, of course, there were two windows with deadlines. One was asking questions and receiving that feedback from the city to help in putting together the application. And then, the other one, of course, was the deadline for the application itself. But, you know, now when you look back on it, is there anything else that you could have done, based on what you've seen with the applications that came in?
So, I think the fact that we received 55 applications and with a request over all, $4.1, I think we were all very surprised. Again, we felt that it was significant response. So, hopefully, that was a good indication and sign that between our meetings, so, we had the meetings, the public meetings, the mayor and council meetings. As you mentioned, we did a video, so thank you very much for that. Not only did we do that, we did some Facebook blasts that both yourself and Brittany also assisted because we also sent email out to like all of the community and organizations, not necessarily just nonprofits. It just went to community, like businesses in the community so that they could help spread the word.
Right.
We left items up on our website. And for the time that we had, once the direction was to do this and that the application and the guidelines were approved, which was the end of July. And then, the submission deadlines was September the 1st and a week prior was when questions were cut off. So, we sent out, not just in the very beginning, but we did it too closer to like, "Hey, it's your final week, remember to get your questions in." And then, "Hey," it was a reminder, right, on your deadline. Again, the only other thing we could have possibly done was had a little bit longer. So, again, you know, possibly if we had done this and started this process a year ago, it would have been a little bit different. But I, I think we did as much as we possibly could and reached as much of an audience as we could. And the feedback in which we received, I think, was indicative of that.
Well, when I look at the scoring matrix, obviously, that was created to make this as fair and equitable to everyone as possible. And what I heard a little bit this afternoon from council was, I think, injecting a little bit of subjectivity into that based on who the organization or agency or entity might be and then looking and seeing that they're not in the top 18 and they didn't score 40 out of 70. And they're like, "Oh, well, that's too bad that they're not in it." But there had to be something to draw the line and again, make it as objective as opposed to subjective. Because as you said, $4.1 million is a lot more than the $600,000 that we were putting out there in the first place.
And again, it would be great if we simply had $4.1, that we could go ahead and just give and that there were no strings and no restrictions and no criteria and no guidelines, no administrative burden and no continuation of information that we were going to have to continue to receive. But all those things are a consideration. And again, because we received so many, that matrix and that evaluation really helped be able to determine a path forward. And again, there was no magic number in saying who scored 40 and higher. We didn't go into this having that thought because we honestly, I wasn't quite expecting to receive 55. But as we started to see, again, the scores that we had reflected on the summary worksheet that we put out was an average of all six members. And for the most part, on all of the applications, the group of six were very close in the scores on every single application. So, you know, it's one of those things. It's, it's, it's the community, it's services, it's, you know, it's a lot of feelings. But at the same time, it's hard to make a decision based on feelings.
Yeah.
When we looked at them, we didn't even necessarily look at the name of the organization. We actually looked at the program.
It's funny, it's funny you say that. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I was thinking to myself as I was sitting there and listening to the discussion, if somehow you were able to just put your hand over the organizations or, you know, hand each council member the applications and kind of blank out or blackout the name of the organization, how would that be, how would they evaluate it at that point without seeing the name of the organization?
Right. And I, and I think a little bit, we touched upon it a little bit, but I think what is the hardest, right, is that fact. You have the organizations, you have them all listed. And because, you know, we all have connections and we all know a little bit about what all the different organizations provide. We think if we see the name, that we know exactly what that money would have been toward, to what program. But it might have been very different in what was written in the application itself. And so, that again, is one of those things. So, unless you're looking at all 55, and again, just even look at the actual applications or the names, it is, is not going to put it back into perspective until you take all 55 and take them back to the matrix. And to try to do it, you know, we had six people. We could have said, "Hey, divvy it up, everybody take eight." But we didn't feel that that would be a very fair and consistent manner in which to evaluate on a score. So, again, all six members looked at all 42 that were eligible to come to the score and we really did rely on the matrix. And with the matrix, there was very specific questions in areas within the applications that based on whatever information was there, really helped score.
Let me ask you a general question about the applications that you received and the specific requests. Were there any surprises there or anything you learned based on the requests that came in? You talked about, you know, it was surprising that there were 55 total applications. But was there, was there anything surprising or anything that you look at in terms of the specific requests that you're like, "Wow, I didn't quite expect that"?
So, one of, one of the ones, and I'm not, I'm not giving special attention. I don't want anybody to think that. But I guess, I guess to put that into perspective, if you actually looked at the lists and you see, "Oh, we got, you know, the library." I don't think anybody would see the library and automatically think, "Oh, it's to put in internet access and a telehealth pod so that people could come into the library, into this area, and actually be able to do a face-to-face and get, right?"
Yeah.
And the event that they didn't have access at home or they couldn't get transportation somewhere, right? So, again, that is, that's one of those where if you look at the list and you're just looking at the list without seeing the program,
Yeah.
it would be surprising. And then, again, when you see the library and you see $12,000 and you see what it's for and you go, "12,000", that isn't the total amount that that is going to cost the library. It's just the amount of funding that they still needed. They had several other partners already and funding already secured for the rest. But it was, it was like that almost, you know, for all of them.
So, let's go back to something here. So, there were 18 that were sort of put to the top of this because the cutoff was at 40 out of 70 on the scoring matrix. So, that gave us 18 of them at the top and a total of, what, $924,670? So, we're $300,000-plus dollars above the originally allotted amount of money. So, what we heard from council this afternoon, I believe, was that they were okay with going above the $600,000 and basically looking at those 18?
Yes. So, actually, it was an awful lot of information and so, we appreciated their time and their feedback. And definitely, you know, it's nothing to just rubber stamp and say, "Yes, let's move forward." Again, there wasn't any magic and there was no preconception that we wanted to do 18. It literally had to do with when you looked at the scoring matrix and the dollars. You know, I had $600,000 and so, it's very hard for staff to say, "Hey, let's, let's hit a million, let's hit," right? So, we looked at the scores and felt that 40 and above was a cleaner break than if you tried to pick another score because they all start to get bunched up at like 38 and a half and 37 and a half. And again, knowing that we were going to have to come back and request from mayor and council the decision to reallocate monies, the ARPA monies, away from a different project or somewhere else where they had already strategically decided that they wanted it to be. Again, very fortunate because this group was very receptive. I don't, I don't think that they said, you know, that $325,000 is too much, we're going to take this down less. If we tried to stay as close to $600,000 as possible, we could do 12, that's the top 12. But that still puts us a little bit over. So, if we truly wanted to stay 600 and less, we could only do 11 organizations. And to only do 11 out of 55,
Yeah.
I mean, this, this, it's, it's been a great process. It's been great to be part of this whole endeavor. It's not every day that the city receives federal funding and is able to give money back into our community in this manner.
That's a fact.
So, very, very excited and proud to be part of this process. But it, a cursing and a blast. You have money to give away and you wish you could do more, but
And I think if
We had to find a method for it.
Right. And if there were ever an indication of the fact that every application is judged on its own, you look at, and I'll just mention these because they're in the top 18, Community Free Clinic in Arkham, Washington County, but then they also had other applications that did not make the top 18.
Correct. So, we, we very specifically, when we started this process back in July, did not restrict any organization to just one application, right? Because we know that there's organizations that are larger organizations and have a capacity or resources and are staffed in such a way that they're able to provide even more services. And so, that's what this was all about, providing as much support as we possibly could back into the community and into the resources. But it absolutely should show that it is not about the name of the organization, right? It literally, and again, it wasn't just about what they're requesting or that these 18 programs were far exceeded any of the rest. That is, again, not what any of this reflects. It is a true reflection of the scoring matrix and the data that we had available in which to, to grade and make those decisions.
Yeah. This was, this was truly a lot of work and I think that's an understatement. I, I think it was very encouraging to hear council really acknowledge that at the end. Obviously, we're going to have a discussion about this. There were, you know, because as, as they alluded to, I think to a person, they're going to hear from people in these organizations or agencies and you're going to have some that are happy, some that are unhappy. And that's just the way it goes based on the amount of money available and again, the scoring matrix itself. But there had to be something that created some sort of, you know, yes, yes, you're going to receive money, no, you're not going to receive money. We still don't know exactly how that's going to play out yet. So, can you give me an idea of what the next steps are at this point?
Certainly. So, I think the takeaway from this evening was mayor and council wanted an opportunity to just take in this information a little bit more, look over the spreadsheet and then also look at the information, the brief information we put on the 18, which was, again, the organizations that scored 40 or more.